Hey, now you should see it. Do you see it now? I started it. Good morning. Testing, testing. Michelle? Can you open that, please? Scared me all to death.
Do you notice that this one thing is 9:30? No, I mean, they must have seen yesterday about 9:20 that they would be at 11:00.
All right, ready? Yep. Good morning. Welcome to our regularly scheduled Board of Supervisors meeting. If you would please rise and join me in the flag salute. Remain standing for a moment of silence. It will be led this morning by Supervisor Ashida.
Please join me in the pledge allegiance to our flag. Salute.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We have a special meeting today, and that was predicated upon the need to take up a matter when we will begin in Washington to see next week, so we'll get to that a little bit later. First, we'll take up our Board of Supervisor matters, beginning with Supervisor Vanderpoel.
All right. You never know which way you're going to look, so I've got to make sure I'm ready. Real quick, I attended an event this morning for Habitat for Humanity. They're having a national Women Build event, and that's sponsored by Lowe's. And events are taking place throughout the country at 200 different locations for different organizations coming together and volunteering and building homes for Habitat for Humanity for that program. And they were doing that on Howard Street in Tulare. If anybody has a chance to drive by, it's over there by Mulcahy School, and they're doing a great job so far. This Wednesday, so tomorrow at 9:00 a.m., will be the Tulare County Peace Officer Memorial Event, right here down the street on Burl. Tomorrow at noon will be the Tulare Volunteer Bureau Annual Award Assembly. They're going to be giving scholarships to high school students and honoring their volunteers of the year. On Thursday morning at 7:00 a.m. at the Heritage Complex in Tulare, Tulare Rotary will be putting on their annual prayer breakfast, and look forward to that event. And then lastly, I would like to wish all mothers a very happy Mother's Day this upcoming weekend. And my wife is one of them, so this is only her second Mother's Day, so it's kind of cool to be able to have her celebrate.
Is she listening?
That's all I have. What's that? I told her to listen, and I was going to give a little shout out to her. And last thing, too, before I give up my time, I know a lot of you probably are not looking at me, and it's not just because I'm ugly, but it's because my tie is so bright today. But this was the color selected by the state of California for mental health awareness, and May is Mental Health Awareness Month, and it's a great month that takes place in Tulare County, showcasing the great program that we have here in our county, but also making people aware of the fact that wellness is possible. And when you've got a tie this color, you'll definitely make them aware. So that's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Vanderpoel. Mr. Cox?
You opened so many doors for opportunities to dig. I'm trying to think about which one am I going to use. First off, saying "Happy Mother's Day" over this microphone does not exclude you from doing something special for your mother or your wife on Mother's Day. I think I got point. And no, Alan, Connie is not listening. I attended the Birdhouse Auction Habitat for Humanity event last week, and I spent most of my time there being harassed by the MC, which was okay. But a great event. I understand they raised lots of money for their cause, probably enough money to build another complete house. Tomorrow morning, the Retirement Board will meet. I will unfortunately miss the memorial event for our fallen police officers. We are interviewing actuaries tomorrow, so not a real exciting day, but very important for our retirement system here in Tulare County. Thursday morning, I will speak to another exciting event. I will speak to a group of accountants and resource managers at a conference here in Visalia, and I would like to turn the remainder of my time over to Allison Pierce, who will tell us what these, all these poster boards are around and give an update on last night's Step Up Challenge event.
Good morning, Supervisors. Allison Pierce, Program Administrator for Step Up and your employee. As you can see, there are a lot of poster boards, and these are just a fraction of the projects that are demonstrated here for you. Some of the schools took them home with it. We actually celebrated last night the Step Up Peace Challenge Awards. We recognize all of the schools for their hard work. Over 800 descended from throughout the county to be recognized for their work that they've been doing all year round. I just want to mention two of the projects that stand out. They were the best overall winners, one being Valley Oak Middle School. They were the middle school winner. And what was exciting is they chose to do their topic on water conservation, and it was rather timely. They chose to educate their peers and their parents and take the initiative to basically educate their, like I said, their peers, their parents, on what they can do and what difference they can make. So that was exciting to recognize them. And then Miss Shin Oak was once again awarded Best Overall. I don't know if all of you know, but the work that they've been doing has resulted in they, between last year and this year, they picked over 80,000 pounds of fresh fruit and produce that they were then able to donate, and to date, it has fed 62,500 individuals in Tulare County. We had to recognize them. I mean, the work that they've been doing has just been phenomenal. Of course, all of the projects were amazing, everything from developing a nutrition app to serving the senior citizens in their community. They really, really did step up and try to make a difference in their schools and community. We really do appreciate our partners, CSAT, the District Attorney's Office, the Sheriff's Department, probation. We couldn't do the program without them, and like I said, it was an honor to be there last night. The kids had a great time. Little conga lines were forming as they were celebrating and having a good time. So just wanted to let you know, and you have the final report.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Supervisor Ashida?
Last Tuesday afternoon, I attended the, basically, the reopening of the Strathmore Library after an extensive remodel, and I can say that the Strathmore Library is probably one of the nicest buildings in the town of Strathmore. And when I was there, we have three computers for adults. They were all manned. It's getting a lot of use. We also have computers in the child's section of the library, and because it was during schooltime, we didn't have any of the young kids there. That evening, I attended a Pathway, Porterville Unified School District Pathway Program judging of the different pathway programs. So every different pathway in Porterville Unified had a presentation, and we had a panel of three judges sit and listen to the presentation on their projects that resulted from their pathway. It was very enlightening. I was a judge on the Emerging Agricultural Technologies, which is how we have called the Eat Program in Strathmore High School, and that is directed toward people who are interested in agriculture as a future. One thing that amazed me is these young people gave such a great presentation. It was like a professional presentation. And I asked, where did you get those skills? Because I can remember being in high school, we didn't have those skills, and they, all three of them said it was through the FFA Program. So the FFA Program is extremely important and valuable to all school districts, and I'm sure my fellow board members support the FFA Program. Then on Wednesday, I went to the FFA Awards Ceremony in Strathmore, and it was a very nice event. Friday, I attended a Sequoia-Yosemite RC&amp;D Meeting in Clovis, and the RC&amp;D, what we do is we look for projects to be, to improve the mountain areas, like metal restoration. One of the biggest projects we were able to secure was a cogeneration plant for, up in Madera County, in North Fork. So we're almost to the point where that plant can be built, and that was through the help of the Sierra Nevada Conservancy. Then also, I attended the Senior Day in the Park, and Supervisor Ennis were, well, we belonged there. And it was a great event. It's always a great event. We had all these seniors there. They participated, and they enjoyed themselves. Yesterday evening, I attended a Strathmore Emerging Technologies Meeting. It's the pathway program, and we had a speaker come in from Cal Poly. What people don't realize, probably not only the Porterville School District, but the high schools and these pathway programs, we are engaging colleges. We're very engaged with Porterville College, Fresno State, and now Cal Poly, trying to give our students in high school college credits when they graduate, transferable college credits. So when they go to a four-year institution, those credits will follow them, or even when they go to a community college. So it cuts down the amount of time that they need to finish their requirements, their four-year requirements. So it's very intertwined, and we're getting a lot of cooperation from the state college system. So it's a great program. I will not be going to Washington, D.C. with the Board next week because I'm the co-chair of the CSAC Working Water Group, going over all the legislation that has recently passed about water conservation, groundwater management, and the bond measure that was passed. Then the following day, I will be attending a San Joaquin Valley Joint Powers Authority Meeting, which is the group that's taking over Amtrak in the Central Valley. So by the end of the year, this group will be managing the Amtrak line in the Central Valley, and Caltrans will no longer have an Amtrak responsibility in the state of California. We're the last line that Caltrans still manages. So I had an opportunity to tell my board members why I'm not going to Washington, D.C., and that's all I have.
Supervisor Ennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I also support FFA and 4H, so those are two real good programs that keep our youth busy. This afternoon, after the meeting, Gene Rousseau and I will be going to East Porterville to meet with Director Claud Ducey out of Sacramento. He's the head of OES. Also, Andrew Lockman and Sabrina Bestamani will also be meeting with us over there, talking about East Porterville and the drought situation. They'll also be giving a special accommodation to Donna Johnson, who is the Water Warrior from East Porterville who got this whole thing started, and she'll be getting special recognition from OES. I will be attending the Peace Officers Memorial tomorrow morning, and then I have a LAFCO meeting at 2:00, filling in for Supervisor Worthley. I'll try to act as much like Supervisor Worthley as I can.
That'll get you in trouble.
Tonight, we're having our last meeting before the Porterville Fair. We'll do our walk-around out there, make sure everything's ready to go for the fair next week. Thursday night, we have our big kickoff mixer for the Porterville Fair. That's at Bank of Sierra. And next Monday, we'll have our Water Commission Meeting, right here at the Board at 3:00. And that pretty well does it for me. Thank you.
Well, we're going to have to start giving us all three minutes to get through our moments here as supervisors, but I think you can see, we're all pretty much engaged in a lot of things. I don't want to mention all the stuff that I've been involved in. As a chair, oftentimes, you end up going to a lot of these events, and I appreciate the opportunity to do that. As I mentioned, when I was presented the proclamation at the Senior Day in the Park, the three most senior members of the Board were there. We all qualified as senior status, so it was appropriate. One thing I did want to mention was, last Tuesday, there was a public meeting to which I was invited in Woodlake. I bring this up because it's a problem that is occurring there, and as the drought deepens, we may see similar sort of things happening elsewhere, and it's something for us to be alert to. But in this situation, an individual or farming enterprise purchased 200 acres of olives around Bravo Lake, installed a new well, and began pumping water into the lake and then wielding it through the Frank Kern Canal down to Strathmore Lindsey Irrigation District to irrigate crops down there. Well, in so doing, it's having a negative impact on the domestic wells that are near this particular well site. And as it stands now, I believe the people will have to seek legal support, to seek an injunction against this sort of action. But again, desperate times call for desperate measures, and unfortunately, we are in rather desperate times from a water standpoint. So I just wanted to bring it to everyone's attention. Last Thursday, the Vietnam Memorial Wall was officially inducted in Dinuba. This is a half-scale model of the wall that will be permanently displayed at the memorial building. The public is invited to come and see it at any time. We had a tremendous turnout of people that were there. Many elected officials from Tulare County were also there, and a great event. I believe it's the only one in existence between Sacramento and Southern California. They only allow them, I think, every 100 miles or so. So it was a great event. We had a wonderful Step Up event in Woodlake on Friday evening, well-attended. The weather was very cooperative, it was very nice. And we, I think, all board members will be in attendance tonight, the Farm Bureau Annual Dinner in Tulare. The reason I will, that Mr. Ennis is filling in for me on tomorrow's LAFCO meeting, I will be at an Air Board Study Session in Bass Lake. If there's any lake there, I don't know, but we'll be there anyway. So that's all I want to bring to say this morning, and that completes our Supervisor Matters. We will now move to, I'm going to take our consent calendar, just so that if there's folks who are here that need to get on their way, we can do that. Items 4 through 14, nothing that I'm aware of needs to be handled separately or taken off, but do any of my board members wish to do so?
One quick thing I wanted to point out. On item number seven, the title of the item says Hillman in Tulare, Hillman Health Center, and then the report says Bob Wiley. Which is it?
I was going to ask for a clarification on that also. I believe it is... There's quite a difference. One's $250,000, and one's $15,000.
Yeah.
Mr. Hess? Good morning, members of the Board.
Good morning.
John Hess, County Minister of Office. There was confusion relative to the agenda item that was submitted. It is for Tulare Hillman for $15,000.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Also, we need to add this drought measure to our consent.
That's a special meeting. Oh, and that is our consent calendar. You're right. Excuse me. That includes the...
We just need to add agenda item number one to that.
Correct. Thank you for that correction.
Yeah, but you can't take action on that until 9:30.
Oh, because it's timed at 9:30? We'll have to delay that.
Oh, okay. Okay.
All right. Anything else to be handled separately? Anybody in the public wish to hear anything separately out of this consent calendar? Then I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, motion to approve consent calendar.
Motion by Mr. Cox, seconded by Supervisor Vanderpoel. Please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous. All right. At this time, we come to a really special part of our meeting, which is why I think so many of you are here today, and we're very, very, very happy to have you here today. And I will turn the matter over to Rhonda.
Good morning, Chairman Worthley, Supervisors, CAO Rousseau, and Council. Today, I'm honored to bring before you employees who are being recognized for their long service to the county. The County Service Awards Program recognizes employees who have completed 10 or more years of continuous service during the prior calendar year. We honor over 130 this year for their loyalty, hard work, their compassion, and service ethic that they provide to their departments and the citizens of Tulare County. As I read a little bit about our awardees, you will hear that many are also good Samaritans in other areas of their lives, and volunteer in their church, school activities, in the communities they live, and for service clubs. Many have also developed special talents that you will also hear about. However, some were shy about saying anything about them, and we respect their desire to simply receive their award today. Awards for employees who have completed 10 years of service will be presented in the Employees Department. There are 141 of those this year. Recipients, as your name is called, please come forward to receive your award. Some are fragile, and we do have boxes for them, so if you'll wait and pick up your boxes at the end of the ceremony, we will have those for you. We will begin with District One. Supervisor Ashida will present, and we'll begin with Yessenia Alvarez. Yessenia is receiving 15-year Service Award today, and she loves traveling with her family and sporting events. She has four beautiful children, and she's proud to be a longtime employee of Tulare County. Jody is a probation officer two and is receiving 15 years of service. He began as a detention services officer, promoted to probation correctional officer, institution supervisor, and then to probation officer. Congratulations. John is receiving 15 years of service award. John wrote that he likes writing short stories. He has an interest in Asian culture and physical training. Brad is a sheriff sergeant in corrections. He's 15 years of service award being given today. He's been involved with Farmersville Youth Football and loves to attend sporting events. He's been married to his wife of 18 years, and they have two children. Michelle is a sheriff's deputy two and is receiving 15 years of service award today. She was the 2014 voted as the DSA Detective of the Year by her peers. She's also been Employee of the Month for Tulare County. Her son Connor is set to go to CDC Academy this year, and daughter Shelby is a senior at Oregon State, majoring in psychology. Congratulations. Okay, we'll get her award to her. Ken is receiving his 20 years of service award. He is a construction and maintenance worker three with Resource Management Agency. He enjoys golf and bowling and general sporting events. He has a wife named Lori and 15 grandkids. Sue is receiving her 20 years of service award. She is the department secretary for the sheriff's office. She began as a secretary in general services, moved to the sheriff's office as 911 coordinator, and has been secretary for the last 16 years and for two sheriffs. She is a golfer and artist, and Sheriff Boudreau says about Sue, she is the heartbeat of the sheriff's office. Harold is receiving his 20-year service award as a probation officer in the probation department. He began as extra-help group supervisor at Glen Moran Juvenile Hall and promoted through the ranks to become a probation officer. He's been married to his beautiful and loving wife, Joy, for 21 years, and has two children. Tracy is a supervising probation officer and receives 25 years of service award today. She enjoys traveling, reading, and watching live theater. Byron is receiving 35 years of service award today and is our IT Communications Systems Administrator. He volunteers for Exeter Police and amateur radio as an amateur radio examiner. He enjoys prospecting and ham radio. Two grown children and has been married 31 years with two grandkids. Ron is receiving his 40 years of service award today for the Solid Waste Department. He started as a construction maintenance worker one in the public works department, promoted through the ranks, became an assistant refuse superintendent, and then the solid waste coordinator. Congratulations Ron.
This is all different than a gold watch. But this is a belt buckle with Tulare County with 40 years subscribed into it.
District Two Supervisor Peter Vanderpoel.
Pete.
Pete. Liz Nuhan. Liz is a child support officer three and receives her 15 Year of Service Award today. She enjoys bike riding, spending time with her one-and-a-half-year-old grandson, and loves animals and the outdoors. Randy Disart. Randy is receiving 20 Years of Service Award and is an engineering tech three with RMA. Randy has been awarded the Tulare County Employee Recognition Award previously, has for the past 30 years engineered sound for live concert settings, produced concert and community events. And he says of his father, "I was always proud to be the son of a county road crewman. My father worked in Road District Two from 1968 to 88, seeing his dedication to serving the county residents, keeping them safe from flooding, and making roads fun to drive. This is what compelled me to work for Tulare County." Corey Jones. Corey is sheriff's lieutenant in corrections and is receiving his 20 Year of Service Award. He has previously been the Officer of the Year. He enjoys coaching youth football. Congratulations Corey. David Case. David is a deputy ag commissioner sealer, receiving 25 Years of Service Award today. He started as a trapper in 1988 and worked his way through the ag inspector up to the deputy ag commissioner. He received his employee recognition award in 2013, and he has been the Cub Master for Cub Scout PAC 267. Congratulations. District Three Supervisor Phil Cox. And we'll begin with Carol Beers. Carol is receiving a 15 Years of Service Award as a librarian one for our library department. She enjoys music, playing the cello, hiking, and traveling. She's the proud great aunt of five boys. Congratulations. Sharon Castellini. Sharon is a paralegal three with county council and is receiving a 15 Year of Service Award. She has also been the county employee of the year in 2006. Says her supervisor, "Sharon is the full package paralegal on our team. She is knowledgeable, full of ideas and innovations, and always willing to help others." Congratulations. Dwayne Cornett. Dwayne is a sheriff sergeant and is receiving his 15 Years of Service today. He is also currently attending... Lieutenant, I'm sorry. He is also attending the Union University, working towards his Bachelor of Science program in criminal justice. He enjoys bass fishing and golf and was the 2006 outstanding law enforcement professional. Congratulations Lieutenant. Jean Fernandez. Jean is receiving his 15 Year of Service Award as a probation officer three. He has been awarded the Latino Peace Officer of the Year Award and in 2013 received the Chief's Award. He enjoys camping, fishing, the outdoors with his wife and daughters, and working on his monster four-by-four truck. Congratulations. Mark Hayes. Mark is receiving 15 Year of Service Award today and is a senior regional planner with TCAG. He enjoys fishing and boating, woodworking, and restorations. And he has a two-and-a-half-year-old grandson. Louis Huerta. Louis is receiving his 15 Year of Service Award today. He is a human resources analyst in the Human Resources Department. He has worked with the WIB, Workforce Investment Board, Resource Management Agency, and now we are fortunate to have him in HRD. He enjoys gardening and photography, has a wonderful wife, one daughter, one grandchild, and eight cats. Congratulations Louis. Linda Vasquez Kaiser. Linda is receiving her 15 Year of Service Award and is a legal office assistant three with the Child Support Services Department. She has an interesting hobby. She enjoys singing telegrams, does wedding coordinating, funeral services, celebrations. She has five great grandchildren, all boys, and her husband is Chaplain Bob Kaiser, and they are members of the Visalia Sportsman's Association. Congratulations. Jocelyn Long. Jocelyn is an office assistant three. Jocelyn receives her 15 Year of Service Award today. She began as extra help in the sheriff's department and has transferred to the probation's department. She also was an employee recognition award recipient and has a new granddaughter, Giselle, born one day after her birthday in December. Congratulations. Kimberly Malin. We'll get her award to her. Kevin Ray. Kevin is receiving his 15 Years of Service and is an IT business intelligence member of the IT department. He was employee of the month and enjoys woodworking. Congratulations. John San Pietro. John is a building zoning inspector with Resource Management Agency and is receiving his 15 Year of Service Award. He enjoys hunting, fishing, performing live music as an occasional musician and blues singer, flying RC helicopters, and enjoys the world of Outlaws racing. Congratulations. Paul Spencer. Paul is not here. Lori Strock. Lori is receiving 15 Year of Service Award and is a collector investigator with Health and Human Services Agency. She began with the probation department and has now since transferred to Health and Human Services. She is a member of the Professional Development Professional Growth Team for HHSA. Congratulations. Janet Wise. Janet is a supervising deputy district attorney in the DA's office. She was the Attorney of the Year twice during her employment, has received the MAD compassionate Partners Award, and MAD is in M-A-D-D, and has also been through the Tulare County Supervisory Academy. Congratulations. Frank Zaragoza. Frank is a sheriff sergeant with 15 Years of Service Award today. He has been also awarded the Tulare County DA Victim Services Officer of the Year. He enjoys freshwater boating and fishing. Congratulations. Ann Bernardo. Ann is receiving her 20 Year of Service Award and is our Law Library Director. She has also been on the California Library Services Board, appointed by the governor. In 2013, she received the Liberty Bell Award from the County Bar Association and is involved in the COS Paralegal Program Advisory Board. Congratulations. Lisa Bertolino. Lisa is our county public defender and is receiving her 20 Year of Service Award today. She holds a law degree and a CPA license, and her hobbies include tap and other dancing, walking dogs, reading movies, and cooking. She has been married to Bill of 28 years, and they have four adult children. Congratulations Lisa. Melissa Estes. Melissa is receiving her 20 Years of Service Award, and she is a child support officer three. She is the Employee of the Year for 2014 for DSS. Her hobby includes sewing and making costumes. Congratulations. Timothy Tim Wall. Tim is receiving his 20 Year of Service Award as an administrative services officer with child support. Tim is often found tinkering around the house and building some theatrical prop for his kid's school plays. But this is what he says. Tim has been married to his favorite wife for almost 23 years and has two children, a favorite daughter who aspires to be an attorney, and a favorite son whose goal is to become an engineer. Congratulations Tim. Christopher Chris Wenzinger. Sheriff's Lieutenant, receiving his 20 Years of Service Award. Chris has been through the Visalia Chamber Leadership Academy and also West Point Leadership Academy. He enjoys road bicycle riding, spending time relaxing with his dog, and working in his wife's rose garden. This is his wife Carol of 28 years. He is also proud to be a veteran of the United States Air Force. Congratulations. Thomas McGuire. Tom is our assistant public defender, receiving 25 Years of Service Award today. His hobbies include traveling, snorkeling, and paddle boarding. Congratulations Tom. John Rosam. John receives his 25 Years of Service Award today and is the chief deputy county counsel over the CPS unit. He is involved in St. Mary's Boy Scouts Troop and the Enchanted Playhouse Theater Company. He is married with three children. Congratulations John. Ed Villalobos. Ed is receiving his 25 Years of Service Award and is a sheriff's sergeant. He is a past recipient of the Latino Chamber of Commerce Deputy of the Year. He's also been the county sheriff deputy of the year and has been a member of the California Gang Task Force. He says his hobby is, he's a diehard football fan of the Rams and Notre Dame, and enjoys and is a diehard baseball of the LA Dodgers. Congratulations. David Winters. David is receiving his 25 Years of Service Award and is a sheriff sergeant. He has also received his Peace Officers Research Association of California Award. His hobby is politics. Congratulations. Ben Smuckler. Ben is receiving his 30 Years of Service Award as a chief deputy public defender. District Four Chairman Steve Worthley will present, and we'll begin with Art Gasca. Art is a probation correctional officer three, is receiving his 15 Years of Service Award. He enjoys fishing, coaching high school football, and spending time with his family, which includes two beautiful girls and a new baby on the way. Congratulations. Karen Madrid. Karen is a deputy with Tulare County Sheriff's Office and is currently working at the Visalia Superior Court. She has been married for 30 years to her husband Manuel and has two children and one grandchild. Congratulations. Sarah Martinez. Sarah is receiving her 15 Year of Service Award as an office assistant four with the sheriff's department. She is also a notary for the sheriff, enjoys football and scrapbooking. Congratulations. Yelma Nee. Yelma Neal. Travis Shaw. Travis is receiving his 15 Year of Service Award as a Sheriff's Deputy II. He has been a Knight of Columbus Officer of the Year, enjoys fishing, camping, and hunting. Congratulations. Deanna Sullivan. Deanna is a Child Support Officer III. She started as extra help and then moved her way up and promoted to the CSO. She spends time with her grandkids, is her most enjoyable hobby. Congratulations. Nancy McCamey. Nancy is retired with 20 Years of Service as Sheriff's Records Clerk. She says she's enjoyed her 20 years with Tulare County and the wonderful people I work with, and now it's time for retirement and to raise my granddaughters. Congratulations. Denise Cardoza. Denise is the Assistant Director of the Child Services Department. She is an avid reader, loves to garden. She's been married for 43 years to the same man. Her favorite. She has three kids and nine grandchildren. Congratulations. Norman Newfield. Norman is receiving his 25 Years of Service Award and is a refuse equipment operator II at the Solid Waste Department. He has been married to Sharon, who is the best wife and best friend a guy could have and puts up with him during the whole NASCAR season. Congratulations. Dilja Huerta. Dilja is receiving her 30 Year of Service Award today and is a probation officer III. She started employment with the county in the health department in the Dynuba Clinic and then moved to the probation department. She has four daughters, one son, and one grandson. Congratulations, Dilja. District Five Supervisor Mike Ennis will present and will begin with Jose Martinez. Jose is receiving his 15 Years of Service Award as probation corrections officer II. He was selected as the Employee of the Quarter for three different occasions and was recognized by the chief in 2001. He enjoys coaching football and wrestling. He's also the proud husband and father of two sons and one daughter. Patricia Negretti. Patricia will receive her 15 Years of Service Award and is a Self-Sufficiency Counselor II with Health and Human Services. Her hobby is she enjoys traveling. Her supervisor says Patricia continuously demonstrates a level of performance that exceeds the normal expectations. Congratulations. Jonathan Price. Jonathan is our IT Systems Technician II and is receiving his 15 Years of Service Award. His supervisor says if you need files restored from backups, Jonathan will be the guy who gets them back for you. Catherine Reen. Catherine is receiving her 25 Years of Service Award and is a Collections Investigator with the probation department. Congratulations. Valerie Simonique. Valerie is a Training Officer II and is receiving her 25 Years of Service Award. She is currently with the Child Support Services Department. She is a member of the Zonta International Organization working to advance the status of women worldwide. Congratulations. Jerry Dunlap. Jerry is receiving his 30 Years of Service Award today and is retired as a Construction and Maintenance Worker III. Jerry has been a board member of Safari Club at the Southern Tulare County Sportsman's Association and he enjoys sponsoring youth programs for outdoor awareness. Congratulations. Sylvia Nasyancino. Sylvia is receiving her 30 Year of Service Award and is a Unit Manager I in the Catworks Division of HHSA. She enjoys camping and coaching girls softball and basketball. She's been married 35 years, has four wonderful adult children, and four wonderful grandchildren with another one on the way. Congratulations. Chairman Worthley, that concludes this portion of the Service Awards.
Well, thank you so much. And before we let you get away, I know each of our board members would like to say a few words to you, and so we'll begin to my right with Mr. Ennis.
Thank you, and thanks everybody for your years of service to Tulare County. I spent 34 years in the automobile business before being elected to this board and I realize how many years a lot of you have spent on the job and I hope you enjoy going to work as much as I did when I was in the car business because to me it wasn't work. I enjoyed it so much to be able to go and to be in that business. And I know that working for the county, we have so many different facets out there, but we all are one big team giving the services to Tulare County that they so desperately need. And each one of you is a big part of that. So, thank you for your years of service. Thank you for what you do every day. You are the face of Tulare County, so thank you very much for your efforts.
Well, I noticed in District Four, 60% of the people receiving awards today are with the Sheriff's Department, which is slightly unusual, but there must be something in the water in District Four.
We feel safe up there.
You know, the one thing I noticed last week that I, it didn't dawn on me until after the meeting, but it's very apparent here today, is when Phil Cox and I joined the board 11 years ago, we had a lot of people that were, had gray hair like I have, that were Baby Boomers. And since that time, we've seen the transition of the Baby Boomers move out of county service. There's some of us that are still left, but we have a younger group than we've had in many, many years, which means that we have and you have a long career with Tulare County. And as Supervisor Ennis brought up, we want to make sure that when you come to work, that you enjoy coming to work. And we really want to show our appreciation, and I think we've done that with a lot of remodel of the facilities that you work in. But I really appreciate the time and energy that you put in to servicing the people in Tulare County. You are the faces, you are the heartbeat of our county services. And every board member here appreciates your dedication to your job. So, we hope to see you for many, many more years. I hope many of you stay around as long as Ron Moore. Forty years is a real achievement, but I'm sure that many of you will be here and this list will change from 15 to 20. And you'll see the majority of the people starting to get their 20-year recognition very soon. So, thank you for all your service.
Supervisor Cox.
Well, I didn't do the addition this time. Rhonda did it for me. Last week, 1,350 years of service. This week, 1,130. She broke it down even further than what I normally go. 5.1 million hours of service represented between the employees from last week and this week. A great accomplishment. A quick question though, Mr. Chair, who's running the Public Defender's Office? I think we have, we have all the leadership here. No, no, okay, you don't need to answer. That's fine.
That was a rhetorical question.
Rhetorical question. So, a number of go-to people here today, which I really appreciate. You know, when, when we get a phone call, we have go-to people and a number of the people that came up today are the go-to people. And we really thank you for that. We appreciate that. When, when we get a phone call, we like to know that we can call someone and resolve an issue. And you guys are really the go-to people. So, I've waited 10 years myself to say this. There's actually someone in the audience today who, who did receive a 25 Year Service Award. I can say I was out with this person when we got shot at. Right, Ed? We, you know, out in Rosy one night, riding with the gang unit, and it was like the wild, wild west. Believe it or not, about every five minutes, Ed was on his belly on the ground and I'm standing up looking around thinking, well, what's, what are you on the ground for? And he goes, "Get down, they're shooting." So, great experiences, you know, helping people solve their, their other issues. That is an experience I will never forget. And I've actually been told, there was another sheriff's lieutenant who's retired one time, who yelled at me when I was walking across the street. "Cox, get out of the middle of the street, you're in the light and someone's going to shoot you." And some of you are probably saying, "Well, that probably wouldn't have been a bad tale." But thank you for all your years of service and five million hours. Thank you, Rhonda, for breaking that down. We, I am in awe at the service you give and the day-to-day things that you do. So, thank you.
Supervisor Vandepoel.
Well, boy, I gotta, first of all, say thank you to our employees, but I have to take advantage of a couple of things that Supervisor Cox mentioned real quick.
I'm not supervisor.
So, first of all, I have to, I have to tell you, I, I'm glad that Supervisor Cox is still here because he's a pretty big targeter. He used to be bigger, so we're very fortunate that he's here. So, thank you, Phil. And then secondly, we see why he's a county supervisor and not a law enforcement officer. We'll point that out real quick too. But, but real quick, I want to say thank you to all of our great county employees. We really have wonderful people that work in this county and that deliver services to all residents that are here. We're very blessed to be up here and have this opportunity to be county supervisors thanking our workforce today because, you know, the board sets policy and departments implement policy and carry out the services each and every day. And we've got great people working for this county. You know, a lot of people say about organizations that they're only as good as the people they have working for them. Well, we are blessed. We have great people working for the county and they do a great job each and every day. We love having such great employees, such a diverse workforce that, that really does give back to the community too. I think it's special to hear a little bit about each of your passions. Those that want to share the information with HR and have HR share that with us. It's great to know that our county is not only made up of people that deliver great service to our employees, but people who also give back to their community. So, I thank you as a county supervisor for all of your years of service. Some of you have been working longer than I've been alive. I'll take that line away from Supervisor Worthley before he says it. And I hope that many of you will continue to work for this county. All of you will continue to deliver, to deliver great services and will hopefully all be receiving your 40-year awards here in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Vandepoel. I get to say the final word and most of the thunder has been stolen, but I did want to say, I do appreciate when each of you gives a little of yourself and shares your personal story with us. Each of you has an individual story. It's funny how groups are different. Last week, we had a number of people who were wondering, remain anonymous. Almost without exception, each of you today shared something about your life. And, you know, I think not only do we appreciate it as board members, but I'm sure your fellow workers also appreciate that. You know, you go to work every day and sometimes you don't necessarily share. Certainly, you don't share across the lines of your employment because we're scattered around the county doing different kinds of things. So, it's, it's enjoyable to know what it is that, that you enjoy doing on your time off and, and sharing that with us because again, each of you is an individual and, and we tend to think of employees, but each of you contribute so much to this county. I also wanted to say that Supervisor Ennis referred to you as the face of Tulare County and that's because so often you are the ones who do interface with the public, sometimes in positive ways and sometimes in not so positive ways, especially the police force, right? Probation Department. But on the other hand, it is your face which people see and they associate our county with the person they see. But I also want to say Supervisor Ashida referred to you as being the heartbeat of the county. But I want to say you're the hands, you're the feet, you're the muscle, you're the people that do the heavy lifting. You're the ones who make things happen. And nothing would happen but for your efforts. And so, we are extremely grateful and, and one thing I neglected to do last week when we did this was to have the board stand and to recognize you before you leave today. And thank you for being here and thank you for choosing Tulare County as your place of employment. Thank you. And now we'll take a little break so you can get back to work and thank you again for being here.
Okay, you guys, it started, sorry.
Was it, did you get the, who made the motion and so forth?
No.
Okay, the motion was made by Supervisor Cox. It was seconded by, seconded by Supervisor Ennis.
Special, thank you.
And the votes were cast and the votes were unanimously cast in favor of the motion. And we will now take up our untimed item, item 15, from the Resource Management Agency.
Did you guys do public?
I'm sorry.
Public comment?
Is that already?
Oh, no, we didn't do public comment. But you know what? Before you start, Mike, I just make this announcement. Anyone here wishing to address the board on matters within our jurisdiction but not on today's agenda are invited to come forward at this time during public comment period and speak. Is there anybody interested in doing so today? Seeing no one, we will close the public comment period. Now we'll go to our untimed item.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. CAO, counsel, Mike Spata, RMA. The matter before you was very straightforward. We're asking that your board take this matter off calendar and direct staff to calendar it again when discussions have concluded with regard to the proposed cooperative agreement involving the High Speed Rail Authority. For the past month or so, there have been some pretty good discussions that have occurred as between RMA staff and the High Speed Rail Authority's staff for the purpose of trying to focus on how to mitigate impacts both to the county and affected property owners and businesses that are close to, in close proximity to the High Speed Rail Authority. In essence, the, the discussions have focused on trying to reduce impacts through elevated section of the High Speed Rail near Road 136, an overpass near Road 120, an overpass near Road 88, an overpass in Road 54, and an underpass near Road 24. In addition, what we're looking at is a pretty extensive road improvement focus as between the county and the High Speed Rail Authority in the sense that there are a number of roads, approximately 17 to the west of the High Speed Rail Authority, where we're looking for about $17 million from the High Speed Rail and funding to address a number of things such as resurfacing, reconstructing, or constructing of roads so that we can get a coherent and feasible interconnection between those overpasses and underpasses to the, to the west so that traffic can proceed east and west, either over or under the High Speed Rail Authority. east and west, either over or under the High Speed Rail Authority. With that background, it, it's pretty complicated in the sense that, or there's complexity that we need to work out with regard to this series of mitigation measures and also the funding for the road portfolio. And as always, with, with proposals such as the SEQA does raise its head, and we're going through that kind of discussion right now to see the extent to which, if any, SEQA is required, who will do it, and, and so forth. So, that's the essence of why we're asking that the matter be taken off calendar, because the conversations are going well. No guarantees, but the conversations are going well. We're talking about how to really mitigate impacts in terms of refinements of the project, which will result hopefully in some large dollars coming to the county to assist us with regard to various road improvements. So, in essence, that's it. I have been in contact with the project manager. We've had some pretty thorough discussions with regard to everything that I've discussed with you today, and I will say it's moving positive rather than negative. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Supervisor Vandepoel.
You know, real quick, Mike, thanks for the report. You don't have to worry about SEQA, because as the state seems to do on special projects, it will be completely exempt. Don't worry about that.
That'd be great.
But, real quick, I just wanted to compliment RMA on their outreach and effort with the High Speed Rail Authority. I know this was the first item we took up in 2015, and here we are now in May, and this is being continued to a date uncertain, which I think makes a lot of sense for you guys to bring it back when, when you've concluded those negotiations with the High Speed Rail Authority. But one of the things you're doing best is involving property owners and finding ways to mitigate the impacts to their property and, and their businesses, more importantly. And so, I appreciate your effort in doing that and keep up the, the work. And if this thing does get built, we want to make sure we have a way of dictating what it looks like in our backyard. And so, I think you guys are doing a great job in carrying that forward, and I thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Cox.
Real quick, when you do bring this back, can you bring back how they've mitigated these issues in other counties?
Very well.
It seems ludicrous that they would not think there would be impacts to roads that you're cutting off, and you have to reroute that traffic somewhere somehow, and I think they've, I would assume they've dealt with this elsewhere. So, bring that back with you when you come.
Very well.
Supervisor Ashida.
I met with Diana Gomez. Have you been meeting with her with the High Speed Rail Authority?
We have met with her. The, the main point of contact is Terry Ogil, who's the project manager for the, for the matter.
I met with her last week, so I just, I didn't have anything to really comment on except for what I've heard back, that things are moving relatively smoothly and relatively rapidly. One thing that Supervisor Cox brought up came to my attention on a personal issue is that my wife owns a piece of property that a high-speed rail goes through down south in LA County. Their land's useless, because it's a foothill property, and there will be no access. So, that access issue is extremely important for us here in Tulare County because of the agricultural requirements of moving equipment. So, I'm glad you could address that.
Acknowledge, and we're focusing on that to try to mitigate the impacts both to the county as well as to the affected businesses.
I assume a motion to table would be in order at this point.
Chair, motion to approve staff recommendation.
Thank you.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Cox, seconded by Supervisor Ennis. Any further discussion? If not, please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Okay. Thank you. That concludes our, our open session today. We have items for closed session, council.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do. You have items A through G on your board's closed session agenda. I do not anticipate, oh, I'm sorry, I do anticipate one announcement.
Thank you for being here this morning, and we will adjourn to closed session this time.
Ready? Announcement on closed session today, Tuesday, May 5th, 2015, by Kathleen Bales Lang, county council. In the matter of item A on the board's closed session agenda, people of the state of California versus Miller et al., the board voted to provide a defense to the Tulare County assessor in this action on the motion of Supervisor Ennis, seconded by Supervisor Cox, on a unanimous vote. There are no other announcements.